You here?
Roll call.
Thank you. Councilor Bosco, Councilor Callen.
Here.
Councilor Jennings.
Here.
Councilor Edgert.
Here.
Councilor Cawthorne.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Lee.
Here.
Councilor Mangini.
Here.
Councilor Stumpf.
Here.
Councilor Suzo.
Here.
Designing and present your...
Okay, Budget Public Hearing tonight is Public Works. All of Public Works? Yes. Welcome.
Well, real quick, I could just go ahead and hand it out to you. Right now, I'm handing out the reports that include the year-to-date. There's also in WTC, there was missing a couple pages at the end, so that's there as well. Also, I handed out any of the changes that made or substantive changes I've made to the DPW budgets, which seems was not a lot. And the last thing that I handed, or the other thing I handed out, was a memo. I received some budget questions earlier today from Councilor Edgar. I answered those. Everybody has them. We're good to go.
Okay. Can everyone see that? If anyone dimmed more lights. Okay, in the bathroom? Okay. Anyway, welcome to the DPW Budget Presentation for next fiscal year. Our presentation is approximately half an hour, although we're going to stop at one or two spots to hand out some additional information that doesn't go well on the screen and make sure you understand what we're talking about. Couple of things related to major initiatives that are in the budget, if you want to make sure we cover those. So, we'll have pauses, but really up to you how long those pauses are. This is the agenda for the meeting tonight, similar to last year. And we'll start with an overview of Public Works. And this is a new slide. The point of this slide is to show you that the perple, which is the capital, the proposed capital expenditures for the next fiscal year, is significantly more than the operating budget that we're going to spend most of this evening on, and total of $49 million flowing through Public Works in the next fiscal year, if everything comes to fruition. And because of this, we will also spend a few minutes on capital, a few more minutes than we normally do on the capital part of the budget. This is a slide you saw a few weeks ago from the Town Manager. We adopted it, and as he said, and we'll say again, Public Works is the largest department on the town side. In the general fund budget breakdown, it's 30 percent, and that does not include roads, water pollution control, non-departmental, and other capital. And if you added all that money in, as I mentioned on the previous slide, that percentage would be much bigger. Number of employees by division. We'll dissect each division briefly. We have 154 employees. That does not include summer seasonal help. And this pie chart includes all the initiatives that we have. We have, I think, three full-time employees, two at Stowe, and an electrician, and some part-time employees, which we'll talk about as we go through the budget presentation. They're all included in this pie chart. Here's the management team. We're all here, except Dave Tuttle, who's on vacation, but he's very happy the meeting's being taped. First thing he does when he gets home is he's going to watch. So, thank you, ETV. And of course, our newest member, Rose Rochard, sitting to my left, our Business Operations Manager, who you all have met. They're all here to help me answer questions and hopefully help you understand the budget. The budget does support your goals. We think it helps advance the infrastructure and service to the public. It does include a second electrician. It includes putting the Stowe School back into service. And a new thing is the Vehicle Replacement Plan, which Derek Kennedy presented to you on December 15th, and he and Rick Davenport can talk more about that. That is integral to the Public Works Department. We are very happy to get a stable, steady funding for equipment that hopefully will let us get our equipment where it needs to be over a period of time. That is new this year, though, the Vehicle Replacement Plan. Again, borrowing from the Town Manager's slide from two weeks ago, I don't know if you remember, you saw this. Items 1, 2, 3 are verbatim from his slide. Major factors affecting the town budget, health insurance, the wage increases from contractual agreements, and putting the Stowe School back into service. Those affected the town budget. They are big impacts on the Public Works budget as well. The impact on each division varies. We also have some insurance allocations, which can be significant, and we'll call those out. We also have the benefit this year of some gasoline pricing reduction. As you know, the price of gas has come down from a year ago. We use a fair bit of gas, and we have budgeted a lower per gallon rate. What I'm going to do right now is, well, I'll do this slide, then I'm going to pause for a second. This is the operating budget, and total for Public Works is a little under 5 percent, with water pollution control about 4.6 percent. The change per division varies significantly. We actually have a decrease in the Refuge and Resource Management Division. We have a significant increase over 8 percent in Buildings and Grounds. We'll tell you why in a minute. Overall, we have a $969,000 increase, of which a significant part of that is due to several factors. So, at this point, I'm just going to pause for one moment. We're going to hand out a chart on the Stowe School expenses. We can talk about it now, or you can just take a look at it. I'll have Billy Taylor talk about it very briefly and answer any questions. But the reason we're passing this out now is because it will come up in many different slides, and it's a significant cost impact to Public Works.
Okay. Well, the rest of the councilors are getting the sheet. The sheet that you will have or have before you is our best estimate of the funds that we think will be needed to put Stowe School back into full operation next year. The columns are, we have it itemized by budget account, a dollar amount, and then there's columns that show you the expenses that are not personnel-related, the expenses that are Buildings and Grounds only, and custodial. Obviously, it will affect both Buildings and Grounds and Custodial divisions. And I don't know if we need to step down each one of these, but the big items are the utilities, natural gas to heat the building, electricity, and then the custodial salaries. And we estimated the need for two full-time and one part-time custodian to staff the And then, of course, there's the various fringe benefit accounts for those salaries, supplies, and machinery. We need a couple of vacuum cleaners, auto scrubber, a square scrubber, in order to keep the building maintained. And then up in the P&amp;G area, up at the top, we've estimated the additional cost in the various accounts to provide the materials they need to maintain the building and the grounds.
Thank you. So, we can either stop here and take some questions, or we can keep going and come back to this.
Might as well take some questions. Donna?
What percentage of the building is going to be utilized?
My understanding is that it's going to be fully utilized.
It's going to be fully utilized by Board of Ed and by, and the town is going to take the whole operational part on its budget. None of the grant money they're bringing in.
Yeah, the grant money that they're bringing in is operational for their portion of classrooms. I think there may be a little bit of capital money involved.
Well, that's, and of course, we're operations anyway, in the buildings. Okay. Thank you.
Gina?
Thank you. In a normal, let's say, K-5 school, how many custodians do you have?
This low, well, to answer directly, is normally there's two full-time, one during the day, one in the evening, and supplemented by part-time or halftime. So, this, what we've proposed is similar or the same as you'd see in the other elementary schools.
Okay. And will there still be evening activities there? I mean, I know if the daycare's there, it'll be operational all year long, unlike, let's say, a regular school that doesn't really have a summer program, I guess, or do, but will there be evening programs too there? Does anybody have? And I'm just wondering if there's...
We may be using it for some recreation-type programs. But in terms of, you know, unlike some of the other elementary schools where you have PTO meetings or school-related meetings there, since it's not going to be a school, there probably won't be those type, but I'm not sure exactly FRC or what the schools' programs really entail in terms of any, you know, meeting, whatever, so.
Brett?
Well, when we sat in this room with the board of Ed, we talked about state money to get the school back into shape. Is this in addition to the state money? There was state money for students, so much per head. There was also talk about money for putting the school back into operation. Is this in addition to it, or am I wrong in that?
Yeah, this, what they're talking about tonight is just the operational, annual operational monies we need to fund it.
Well, I asked them that night what the cost was going to be at the time to do it. Nobody could give it. At least you've given a figure now, Billy. But I thought there was state money involved in this too. In addition to the pupil.
Yeah, not for ongoing operational costs. Except, you know, for the schools, that is accurate, but not for us.
So, they're going to get whatever money comes to use on that side of it, and none of it we'll have to do right here.
Correct.
Now, you know I voted no.
Tom?
Now, we consolidated some services, or some buildings, I should say. How do you factor in our lease, the leases we used to have with the daycare units, the moving of the buildings, the consolidation of the buildings? That's all, how does that factor in on these $100?
There's going to be minimal savings on the other side. You know, the leases ran out of last year's budget, so we already took all the savings from that as part of the current year's budget.
I'm not, that's, I guess I'm saying you're wrong. So, tell me what we're leasing before and what we're not leasing today. That amount of money offsets really what we're paying into this today. So, because we're not leasing anymore.
No.
Well, if we were still leasing that, right? If we were still leasing, that would cost us money. We're no longer leasing because we went to a full school. Because we consolidated it.
What, okay. Let me try it again. So, what we were leasing was South Road. That was about $130-some thousand dollar year lease.
Right.
In the current year's budget, already accounts for us moving from South Road to Alcorn.
Yes.
So, that's, you know, any savings was already taken as part of the current year's budget.
Yeah, and I'm not talking savings, but at one point, we did spend $130,000 for a lease, which we are not spending now because we're at Alcorn School. Or we're at...
We're at Alcorn.
Because we're at Alcorn.
Right. So, and then the moving, also the consolidations, these also were some...
Right. Well, the big, yeah, the big, you know, the shifting was the moving of the High Street facility operations, as well as the Alcorn operations into one facility, which we saved, you know, right off the top, one supervisory position. You know, the, so again, but that's part of this year, the structure of the current year's budget. You know, what I was talking about was, operationally, we are going to be relocating the Social Services operations out of Village Center into the former FRC building on High Street. We still have to provide heat to that building, but it'll be a lesser degree than what it, you know, is currently. So, I mean, there's going to be savings. It's going to be minimal, and really, probably not a lot to talk about, to be honest. So, there are some savings there, but not really a large amount.
Donna?
This is more, Matt, there's still money left that would have to be paid back to the state if we did not reutilize this building as an educational. And that, you know, falls onto Tom. It's not a lease savings. It's actually a savings that we would be not paying. I don't know what's left.
About $800,000.
I was just going, I thought it was about that. So, that's the savings. I don't know, Tom.
I think, I know, I knew where you were going.
Yeah.
And I guess...
That's what I'm trying to wrap my head around.
What we're doing now, we talked about three years ago, in terms of how to restructure our operations and try to make it efficient from the operational piece. I think the biggest difference to this really is the schools wanting to put their operations in there as well. Because, again, we were looking at it, you know, even two years ago, when we started talking about this with the schools, they hadn't put forward, you know, what they wanted to do there. And so, we made the assumption that it was just going to be our Child Development Center, which, again, wouldn't necessitate two full-time custodial people. And so, when you bring in the scale of operations that they are, we are now operating elementary school. We're going to be up in 300-plus range. And again, because they have school operations there, it starts, you know, requiring different types of staffing in terms of custodian there at all times during the day. You know, we're, so it just, it scaled it up a lot more than what we were considering when we thought we were going to be the only group in that building. That's how it was portrayed two years ago.
Right. And then, going back to two years, this was a very good idea two years ago, and, you know, now we're just looking at the, it's still a good idea as far as I'm concerned, but it's still, now we're looking at the price tag of it, and it kind of gives you a little bit of, you've got to think back three years ago, and I, who expected this?
Right.
So, I'm trying to justify this in my own mind, of why it went up so much.
Right. And that, that's, that is...
That's the key. That's it. Yeah. Thanks, Matt.
Anyone else on Harriet Beecher Stowe?
We're going to put a security guard in this place, too.
Yeah. Brett?
Clear me up. A little fuzzy here. There's going to be two classrooms smart. That's the four-year-old, the little ones.
I think there's going to be five classrooms total, but only two qualify for the grant that Council authorized.
Right. But there's going to be five altogether.
I believe it's five, yes. Don't hold me to that number. I think it's five.
That I didn't know. Plus, we're going to have the High Street operation and the Hazardville operation.
All of our Child Development Center operations will be there, plus the FRC from Hazardville is relocated there.
And that's it?
I think there's going to be a office, maybe, and some meeting space for Kite. And I think I'm leaving something else out. I just can't remember everything. There might be one more thing. I just, I don't remember.
I just wanted to clear in my mind what's going to be with the SRO over there. Yeah, they're going to put another $27 out there.
Plus 2 percent.
Questions on Harriet Beecher Stowe? And just as a reminder, when you're speaking, pull the microphones closer to your mouth, please. Ed, go ahead.
So, now I look at a price tag of...
Yeah, Ed does. Yes, you do. Not for you, but for ETV.
Oh, for the TV. So, now we're, so I'm looking at a price tag of $8,800 for machinery. We were in that school before. We would pull everything out of there, and now, whatever we use at Stowe, or, I mean, what we use at High Street, or whatever, for machinery, you're talking about vacuum cleaners for $8,000 and scrubbers or whatever. What do we do with the material that was there prior to it, and it's only been closed a year? We rented it to crack.
Right. But we didn't have any, any of our equipment had been in there for...
We took all of our equipment out of there. And what happened to it? And we're going to purchase all new?
Well, most likely, that equipment that was in there, because we'd been replacing all the equipment in our schools, because it was substandard. So, unless, I think you want to go back to the MOPS, we have to buy the equipment.
Well, yes, I like to go back to the MOPS, because right now, by the looks of the two budgets with the school department and the town, we're out of control here.
Any other questions on Stowe? Okay. Thank you.
Hey, guys. I just want to make one other point, two other points here. One is that the comparison that you see here is with the original adopted budget for 2015 versus what's being proposed for 2016. There has been one revision to the current year's budget, which is significant. I did not include because for the purposes of our discussions, if you'd understand it, we just felt it was clearer not to throw that in there. It would actually make our budget look much, much better, FYI. So, we didn't put it in there. We just think it would, it's more transparent not to put that transfer in there, number one. Number two is...
And just tell us what transfer you're referring to.
It was a recent transfer for snow removal. And that would skew these numbers a bit. The other point I want to make is, I know the Manager handed out a list of some cuts that he made to the Public Works budget. Just so you know, before we submitted our budget to the Manager, we were looking at every line. We made some significant cuts in our divisions as well, because we wanted to make sure we weren't presenting anything that was over 5 percent. As bad as that seems, it was worse before we made some last-minute cuts across the board. So, those are not listed there, but we can certainly give those to you in the presentation. Okay. I'll move on. So, the total increase of DPW is about $969,000. And the point of this slide is to show you what I call the headwinds. So, before we started looking at any new DPW programs and what have you, we were dealing with almost $800,000 of increases in the budget. Embedded in that is the Stowe numbers that you saw. There's also health insurance increases that were across the department, and other contractual salary increases. So, we really had a tight time here looking at programs, and we really tried to fine-tune our analysis. One of the things we like to look at is department-wide overtime, and of course, it varies division by division. But the last three years, our overtime in the department has been remarkably steady. It's been about $900,000, give or take just a little bit, despite all kinds of different factors. Those are the first three bars. And we've been budgeting something significantly less than that. Now, already this year, on the projected for 2015, we're already at about $850,000. That's where we are. And to get us to the end of the year, we took an, you know, looked at what we typically would have in overtime the last three months. That would bring us over $1 million. Now, if you assume, and we have a slide later on, that about $200,000 of this year's overtime is because of the extraordinary snow, and back that out, we are still looking at a department-wide overtime similar to the last three years. That seems to be where we're at on the overtime, although we are not budgeting that amount. We haven't been, and we didn't do it this year. We're still hoping we can cut that, but the reality is, we've been spending, in a normal year, around $880,000 department-wide on overtime. Then, operating budget by division, and just keep moving on. Let's go division by division. First, we'll look at Building and Grounds, which is the largest budget division, primarily because all the energy, electric, and natural gas accounts are in this division. An example of the kind of work they do, this is a before and after. The FRC at Stowe, the left, before, obviously, the right after. High-quality work, which we're proud of our team for. And on the operating side, some of the factors here, in the Stowe impacts, $125,000 here. They had a slight decrease in gasoline, and we budgeted a full-time electrician. We're going to talk about that in one second. They had a significant increase in their workers' comp allocation. As you remember, I said some divisions were really impacted by insurance allocations. This division was. That led to an overall 8 percent increase, in addition to the things we talked about before, health insurance and contractual salary increases. I'm not going to repeat those for every division. And again, there's an emergency action plan for Prospect Street budget. It's not a lot of money, but I wanted to tell you that we are hoping to do that. So, at this time, I would like to just pause, and we have another handout related to the electrician, and we want to walk you through that full-time electrician position.
Okay. Well, that's being handed out. For some time, we've been talking about the need to have a second electrician on the staff. And what we're proposing is the second electrician work hours that would overlap with the existing position that we have. Work hours about from 1:00 to 9:30 PM. So that when two electricians are required to work together, they can do that. But that the second electrician also be available after school hours to work on spaces that are occupied during the day, when our current electrician would have to work on overtime in order to do that work. Another need that we, that we've kind of perceived for a while now is to bring the streetlight maintenance in-house. We've been using contracted streetlight maintenance for a number of years since the town took over the system from then, what was then CLMP. And frankly, it just, it hasn't been all that satisfactory. We don't think the service has been what it, what it needs to be to the public. And we saw this second electrician as an opportunity to make that work in-house and save some money. It's not specifically, well, some of these savings are called out in this handout, but if you just looked at the streetlight maintenance portion, where we proposed to have this electrician work on, I think it's 12 to 16 hours a week on streetlights, by bringing it in-house, saving the cost of the annual contract of $74,000. When you add all the expenses that would be required, the materials, an aerial truck, we've still come up with a savings for just that portion of the work of about $16,000 a year. In addition, some of the other contracted work we're currently doing could be brought in-house and, including the emergency light inspection. Additional benefits that we have that are kind of unquantified are just reducing the backlog of work. We have a number of projects which I list on the, I list some of them on the back, that work that has been deferred recently, because we just don't have enough manpower with one electrician to get it done. But just quickly, looking at the annual costs, I list the salary, the fringe benefits, the supplies for streetlights, the aerial truck purchase, which would be amortized over a 15-year life, and the operation and maintenance cost of the truck. And then estimating the annual savings, we have the cost of the streetlight contract. We're estimating the current electrician's overtime would be reduced by about 2/3. We would bring the emergency lighting inspections and repairs in-house, and then finally, the items that I can't really quantify, the cost of delayed projects and deferred maintenance. Couple of the assumptions that we did, that we built into this, is that it would take us about four months after July 1st to make the transition, to hire an electrician, get the truck, get everybody up to speed, and have, and terminate the contract of the streetlight maintenance contract. And I guess I could-
One question. Okay, questions on electrician, Bill?
Nope, I'm just pointing down that way.
Cindy?
I do. Thank you for the overview. And I applaud the department for the entrance to streetlights, and in particular, Thompsonville, those lights that have been neglected, not maintained properly by CLMP. So, I'm looking at this as a positive. Out of town, but especially I know you're active in that town, and I want to work on that issue. But again, we can see our own pain, not doing our job up to our standards, since we've fallen behind. So, I think it's good. I wonder if that will not identify with the issue. It's on one side.
Yeah, the, I'm on the Public Works Committee, so I was in favor of this, but I have a question about, are we going to still need to have a contractor for places where we have poles and underground, what do you call it? Are we still going to need to hang on to someone for material for contracting for poles, et cetera, and those types of lights?
Good question. That's a point I missed. Yeah, we did, we did still include, I think, $10,000 in the budget for what I call extraordinary repairs that we couldn't handle, like erecting a pole if it got knocked down, that sort of thing.
Those areas where they're underground, whatever. Thank you. Because I didn't see that.
Okay. Joey?
Well, how much did we spend last year on contractors for, to help our guys for electrical?
If you're referring to outside of the streetlight and-
Right, right, regular. This electrician position?
I think primarily, we spent money on the emergency lighting inspection repairs of about $14,000. I think most, if not all, and I'm looking for the market, it just kind of, I think most of, or if not all, the other work was done in-house.
Well, I guess, you know, I'm for doing a lot of stuff in-house. And when we, Ken and I, when we first got on, pushed for a lot more to put stuff to do in-house. But I just, I can't see this electrician. I think first off, a lot of the stuff that we've been paying overtime would probably be just as cheap to have a contractor come out. Because I know at one time, we weren't paying a lot of money per hour for a contractor. He supplies the van, he supplies all the stuff he needs, and when there's no work for him, we don't pay him. The fixing the streetlights, I mean, personally, I was on the ground floor when we purchased them, and that was a disaster. I mean, we should have just left them with CLMP. But I think us trying to fix them, it's going to even be worse because they're going to start going, and we're not going to get out there and fix them, and our aerials too short or... I think that there's certain things that we should stay out of. I think we should use subcontractors for some things when it's going to be advantageous to us. And I really, with this economy we have and this budget, I don't think we need another electrician. It's, you know, I think it's time we start looking into different ways instead of getting more top-heavy and more top-heavy with employees. I mean, we're just, we're building these departments so big now that it's going to be such a steamroller, we're never going to be able to stop. So, I'm against an electrician. I would love to see some numbers on how much we have a contract for an electrician that we pay out, how much it costs us for the overtime that we've spent on our electrician is paid plus whatever benefits, and I'd like to see where the cost savings is and how much it is before I would support it. I'd like to see that.
What's that? Red?
Yep. Just greater workload. You've got school and police department and IT. Can you give me more detail on what you expect on that?
Well, I think since the town took over the maintenance of the school, the school buildings, it's fallen to buildings and grounds to do the cabling work for all these devices that are proliferating, all these security systems and panic alarms. But they're just generally today's, you know, it's a fact of life today, there's more and more data needs, and there's more and more computers out there, and, you know, which is having to run a lot more cabling. The IT department does not do that.
Shouldn't that be in the security budget, the school's security budget, on here on ours? I mean, why are they going to have it in there, and we're going to have it here, and we're going to see a duplication?
I don't know. That's above my pay grade.
I don't know the answer to that, but I know that there's money in there for school security, and now you're saying the same thing. So, I'm, I would question that right away. Matt's shaking his head, no.
Yeah, no, no, no. No. You know, what he's talking about is when we're doing any pulls of, you know, moving around, because one of the things that does happen in the schools is they will relocate classrooms. And if it's relocated, and they have to, you know, put any type of the data in there, we would have to pull the cable for that. My guess is at Stowe, you're pulling a lot of cable for that, for the computers and everything else. So, that's, you know, when we look at some of the IT projects that we do, it's a lot cheaper for our people to do it than to pay a company to come in and do it. Three to four times the cost to get a company to come in to pull that cable. So, you know, school security, you know, other than maybe some alarms, are you pulling anything for cameras or anything else, or are you?
Yeah, we're pulling for power for the automatic doors, the card teases.
Okay. But like cameras and the other stuff, you're not doing anything? Right. So, it's very limited what they're doing. And that wouldn't be at all contained in the school's budget because we pay for all that.
We have money in for school security too, not just the school budget. Just try and understand what he's putting forth here. What are you going to do with the police department?
And just so we're clear, so when they're doing something that is related, like to that project, my guess is the supply costs are all coming out of the CIP. So, that's being paid for. So, again, it's just, you know, the time of our employees to actually do the work. That would be not covered within the CIP for those projects.
Does that include IT too?
Any work that they're doing. Again, if they are buying any materials or equipment for that project, it'll be coming out of the CIP. Their time working towards it is not paid for through the school's security, CIP.
But he also has IT here, and if I misunderstood you, Matt, some of this power that you're putting in there is for IT too, is it?
I'm sorry, I don't-
It, you know, it could be. Again, we'd have to look at it project by project what they're doing.
Right. Well, I'm looking at a sheet here that says you want another electrician. Now, I know there are certain times, in addition, with OSHA requires two people there, you can't have one in certain instances, okay? But I'm trying to rationalize whether we need another electrician or not. I need more information, okay? I'm not saying I'm for, I'm not saying I'm against, but I'm saying that one clause there on these greater workload is what's bothering me because I need to understand the workload before I can make a decision on this. And right now, you haven't given me enough, Billy.
All set, Red?
Yeah.
Gina?
Tom? Two questions. One is if we do performance contracting and that passes, and we change the type of lighting, how does this scenario get affected? That's one of the things, that's the low-hanging fruit, is they can calculate that and get your savings right away?
Well, I guess it would have, it would have a limited effect on the need for somebody to get on a lift and do that kind of lighting, replacement of bulbs and so forth, but actually, our custodians do most of that in the building.
This would be the streetlights should be changed out.
Oh, the streetlights. Oh, I'm sorry, I misunderstood.
That's okay.
Well, it would, the LEDs, if that's the way we go, or even the induction, which is another possibility, would certainly lower the need to replace bulbs.
Right.
To replace the lamp. LED doesn't really have a lamp, but to replace bulbs, we wouldn't have that need. It'd have the other just routine things that they felt wrong, wiring, photocells would get dirty, and the lights come on too early, or don't function, but would certainly reduce the need for streetlight maintenance, no doubt about it.
And I guess the other thing is, I guess you made a comment on, you know, replacement of poles and things like that. If that happens on an accident, we do recoup the money from the perpetrator?
We try, we try.
You try? Okay.
We go after their insurance.
You do? Okay, okay. I was like, gee, I'm not understanding it. Thank you.
Yeah, we're going back to the one right now that they want to pay us about havoc work it costs us to replace the pole, so.
Okay, thank you.
Tom? You know, I'm always in favor of licensed tradesmen. You know, the town hasn't always had licensed tradesmen. We've just gotten to this. I think during the school, when we consolidated with the schools, we took on a lot of licensed tradesmen. And since we've taken on a lot of licensed tradesmen, it's enabled us to do these fantastic renovations that we probably haven't been able to totally do before without a lot of outside contracts, including all the havoc work, all the electrical work, the skilled labor with carpenters, renovation of the town hall, Stowe, Alcorn, the Angelo La Monda Center. I mean, they've all taken tradesmen to do. And we've gone, as a council, I think, in a direction that we've never seen before from, you know, especially buildings and grounds. And I love that trend, and that trend is great when we can do all this great work. And we're sitting in a room that right down to the tables is from building and grounds. So, you know, I'm not against having another licensed electrician. The only question I had was kind of sort of what you had. I thought we had talked earlier that they were going to share a lot of more duties. It sounds like this is, to me, this is all they're going to do, or he is, or she is going to do. But you really have more plans on that workload for that person also. At one point, I thought we discussed that. You know, is that all, and I guess that's the question, aren't you going to be able to use an electrician too, a second shift electrician, to do other things other than just streetlights?
Oh, definitely.
And that's, yeah, that's what I'm trying to-
I neglected to mention, one of the reasons that we set the hours the way we did was so that work could be done after school hours, when students have gone home, or even in town buildings, after the folks have gone home for the day, they can work in spaces that would otherwise be occupied. That would reduce the need for some of the overtime.
And that was the huge point a year ago, maybe, when we discussed work. Because I don't think it made last budget. I don't know, Matt, was that true? Because we had these discussions on this, and now-
A year ago was when it was proposed last.
Right, and that wasn't including the streetlights. Now, we have the streetlight factor that it almost made budget back then because we're going to do a lot of that night electrical work in the school buildings, and now we have so many buildings that it makes more sense now to me. Thank you.
What's that, Mike? Tom, sorry. Yeah. Joey?
While you're doing my other figures, can you figure out what it costs us an hour for this man with benefits on, no overtime week, just a regular 40-hour week? How much an hour? You figure with all his benefits, you know, soup to nuts on what it's going to run us? And where in our budget is this aerial truck? Are we leasing it, or are we buying it, which is going to, and how much was the cost of the aerial truck?
We got a price of $188,000. We estimate it's like the 15, that's why I include, over 15 years, it's $12,000.
So, in this, in this budget, we have an additional $180,000 for an aerial truck?
It's in, excuse me, it's in the capital replacement because we have to replace our aerial truck.
Well, that's what I was wanting, that's where I was getting, are we going to replace our aerial? If we didn't have this position, would we be replacing our aerial truck?
We'd have to replace it, yes.
And when? Would it be this year, or would it be-
My understanding, I thought it was this year. They're looking.
Or are we speeding it up to? Right. But was it for this year, or was it for next year? It's an additional. It's listed as an additional. So, it's an additional. So, if this position doesn't exist, then this aerial truck doesn't exist, and we'd be cutting out a couple hundred thousand dollars, actually almost $300,000 out of the budget. Is that so?
Well, you know, I thought, because I know for the last three years, I've seen the aerial up for replacement.
It is insufficient for what you're using it for, the current one. So, I don't have a spreadsheet going out, I can't tell you where it's supposed to be replaced, but I'm looking at it this year. It's not in here. I have it as 2020. And that's 704, and that's our bucket lift truck. Okay. Thank you.
All right. Anyone else on the second electrician position? Any further questions? Okay, Jonathan, continue.
Thank you. So, I think we discussed everything we want to for tonight about the electrician. Moving on to the, no, there's other more questions, I'm happy to answer them.
That's fine.
Keep moving along, move along.
Yes, move along.
Encourage me to move along, that's what we're going to do. So, this is the buildings and grounds, this is the capital improvement plan for the buildings and grounds. We go through each division. They have a variety of equipment in here, and they also have, towards the bottom, you can see those initials VRP. That is the vehicle replacement plan, which we referred to earlier. So, they have a number of vehicles that are due for replacement, or proposed for replacement as of today in that plan. Here's pictures of some of those vehicles and equipment. Moving on to custodial, another example of before and after work, this is the Hazardville Memorial Gym Floor, before and after. Just as an aside, the old bleachers that were in the, on the gym are being reused to the extent that they can in the old, in the wood shop down there to help build new cabinets or whatever. They're trying to, again, reuse and recycle as much of that equipment as they can, or much of those bleachers as they can. Now, the custodial has a large percentage of personnel costs, so the factors I talked about early on about health insurance and contractual salary increases will affect this budget more than another one because it's more personnel-based. One of the issues we still are struggling with is the whole part-time overtime budgeting. I'll have a slide next on that. We do have a new cleaning standard policy in place this year, and in the last year or two, there are a few things with, I believe, our custodial staff and cleaning. The biggest hit from the Harry Beecher Stowe School coming online is to the custodial budget. You can see that, $169,000. So, overall, it's a- is to the custodial budget. You can see that, $169,000. So overall, it's a 6% increase. Now, with regards to the overtime and part-time plan, the goal was several years ago to ramp up our part-time staffing and reduce the overtime. And we've been partially successful doing that. The blue is the part-time, the red is the overtime. We projected this year and where we're budgeting next year. The challenge has been keep, getting, keeping part-time fully staffed. We have 10 part-time custodians in the budget, plus one for stow. And, and again, the challenge has been keeping 10. It, it, just with turnover and the hiring and so on, we've been around eight. So that's, that's been affecting us. But we've really been making a go at it this year. So we are reducing the overall dollars. The question is, is the, are our efforts, the cost of our efforts exceeding the savings, number one? And number two, what is the end game? What, what can we hope to get if we were ultimately successful keeping 10 part-timers on here? What would that total expense be? And we struggled with that internally, and we, you know, we proposed getting some outside help to help us with that. But we'll continue to move in this direction unless council tells us otherwise. On the capital improvement plan for custodial, a lot of piece, smaller pieces of equipment, and there is one van, again, in the vehicle replacement plan. Moving on to the highway division, of course, on the right side is our lovely dura-patcher, which we, we all love dearly, and we got this year. Left side, of course, is snow removal. And with the highway, we have continued to budget money for cleaning half our catch basins. And as you know, there are new stormwater rules pending, and the first draft of those stormwater rules, we estimated could cost the Tannenfield an additional $300,000 or more. It was hard to say exactly. Those rules are, have been sent back to DEEP. They're being revised. We don't have the final rules. It will certainly be less onerous than what the initial one is, but we don't know what the final rule is, and we haven't been able to assess what those costs are. We have not included any significant increase for new compliance rules in this budget. It's something that's out there, something we're going to have to address. We do have one algae treatment for freshwater pond, and we have included in the CIP the cost for a dura-patcher tank, a 3,000-gallon tank that we would have at Moody Road, so we wouldn't have to drive to Farmington to fill up with the emulsion sometimes twice, three times a week. So we've included that there. We do have a sheet, we have a report on the dura-patcher. We can pause and hand that out now or wait until we get to the capital page. There is a savings in gasoline here, but a significant increase in workers' comp and overall about a 4% increase. One thing we wanted to point out, the council's interested in the annual cost of winter operations. This is highway only. So we projected this year, we don't have all the numbers in yet, but if you look at this historical chart of, again, the highway-only winter operations, if you include this year, four of the last five years have been pretty expensive. And the last two years, if you didn't keep going back, we had to transfer money in for the highway operations. This year, we've already made one transfer for highway operations, and we didn't complete it. We didn't come for the overtime. That's the last little bar. So in the highway division alone, we're looking at almost a million dollars for snow removal this year. That's significant. This year was extraordinary. We all know. I think we counted like 26 storms. We normally budget for 12 so far, and many of them were on weekends, et cetera. You've heard the story. So it's really extraordinary.
We read the stories.
Huh?
We lived the stories.
Yes, you, we lived it. So again, on the highway and the capital improvement plan, there are several vehicles in the vehicle replacement plan and some equipment, which again, we can go into as much or little detail as you'd like when we get to the capital section. Whoops. Moving on to fleet, couple pictures of the parts area, tire storage area. One of the things we've talked about for several years is replacing the fuel tanks and assessing a surcharge and everyone who uses the fuel. That issue, I understand, is still outstanding, hasn't been resolved. There's an increase in the fleet budget for, as I said, the headwinds. Rick Davenport, the fleet manager, has worked very hard with Derek on the vehicle replacement plan, and Rick will be keeping that up as, as we go forward. There is a new policy the town adopted on getting rid of assets, asset disposal. So anything over $2,000 that we value, over $2,000, you're going to have to approve. So we, you should expect to see some of those things coming to your council meetings in the near future. We've developed a form and a process. So anything over $2,000, we're, we're still planning to use internet auctions as we did before, and you'll see that on our recommendation. You have to approve that, but that's something new this year. And we have an inventory task that we're going to kick off as soon as the part-time person gets up to speed and we feel that they can manage the, the new inventory. We want to do a whole inventory analysis and setup and then not be able to manage it and have it lapse back to where we are. So we have someone who we're training, and as soon as we feel they're ready, we're going to hopefully kick off that effort. Something that the council's found interesting in the past is the fuel usage by departments. Outside agencies, still the largest user of fuel in the town. What's interesting is that the amount of gas, this is gas and diesel, that was used last calendar year is virtually identical to the year before. However, that was, everyone, there didn't seem to be much change in that despite a, a drop in pricing. As I said, we did budget a decrease in gas pricing. I don't know about everyone else here. And as a result of the Moody Road Safety Committee, fueling hours for outside agencies have been reduced. Moving on to refuse and resource management, again, we're one of 20 communities in the state that have municipal collection, mostly communities similar size to Enfield. In the budget, that refuse and resource management actually had a decrease in the overall budget, and that was due to two main factors. One was the workers' comp allocation went down by $90,000, and they, because of the reduction in gas prices, they had a $57,000 decrease in their gasoline budget. So overall, almost a 3% decrease. But the budget still includes two shredding days, two hazardous waste days, Christmas tree grinding, program, new programs that are kicking off this year in recycling textiles, mattresses, and new initiatives for recycling in town buildings and schools. Terms of vehicle replacement plan, a couple pieces of equipment in there for refuse and resource management, and then some other equipment as well. Some of the programs, you've seen these ads, and just to remind you, there's a textile that'll be kicking off in April, shredding, hazardous waste also in April. Finally, water pollution control, which, again, this is a town manager's slide. I don't think I added to it, so you've seen it before. This is, these are pictures of the sewer jet lining project we did this year, which we hope to continue annually. You're all aware of the facility plan upgrades. We don't need to spend a lot of time talking about the wastewater treatment plan because you've heard a lot about it. There's a facility plan going on. Overall budget is a 4% increase. A lot of that's due to, again, insurance reallocations. There is one part-time person, new person included in this budget for grease trap inspections. Kevin can answer questions about that if you'd like. The facility plan study underway, hopefully going to referendum in November. Capital improvement plan for water pollution control includes three vehicles, safety equipment, pumps, infrastructure, and a belt filter press. So let's just talk about the capital equipment. Again, this is the $26 million in the purple. Spend a couple minutes on that. Again, this is a manager's slide from a couple weeks ago. This is his capital improvement program. And most of the items on the right, not all, but most of them are either for public works or going to flow through public works. This is how we get to the $26 million. We have $987,000 in the vehicle plan. There's equipment, there's other capital, then we have roads from the new referendum. We have leftover money from the 2010 referendum. We have some other projects, and we have water pollution control, and that totals $26 million. Just a quick roads recap. This is the money from the 2010 that's left over. This is the, these are the projects in the queue totaling a little over $9 million. You can see Mullen Road is on there, red. I answered your question before. Still planning to do those culverts this year. And in terms of 2015, this is the new referendum money, trying to stabilize funding and projects at about $12 million a year. So this is this year, next year, what we're working on. These are some other projects that we're calling engineering or capital projects, which you may or may not be familiar about with. And the bottom one is the South River Street Bridge Project, which we get 80% of that as grant money. To the extent there is extra funding or additional funding available, these are some of our priorities. Part-time environmental health and safety person, workforce study of custodial operations about that part-time issue. We're looking to dust off the truck wash bid documents and get that out to bid because we think that's going to be required for new stormwater regulations. And then the others are traffic signals, storm drain lining, pothole patching equipment. I know there was some interest in the council about, it's called the hot box to supplement the dura-patcher, if you're so inclined, and then the South River Street Bridge Project. Some other items to consider, I think you're all aware of these. There's facility plan on the water pollution control. There's also another facility plan going on with Honeywell and a company called SBS looking at roofs, windows, parking lots, et cetera, and energy issues. The Enfield High School Project, of course, the other three things are variable, hard to budget for, energy, weather, and referenda. So again, summary of the operating budget, a little under 5% department-wide, and appreciate your patience, and we'd be happy to answer any questions you have. I want to thank our staff for all their help in the presentation and the budget.
Great. Thank you, Jonathan. Cindy, then Tom, then Ed?
Thank you, Jonathan, for the presentation. Thank you all for coming tonight. Also, I appreciate your time. I just have two questions regarding the town manager budget reduction. Half of our mental H and S engineer is that?
Environmental health and safety engineer?
Half, meaning?
Meaning it was a part-time.
Well, there's, and it's spread in two different cost centers. It's in administration and then in WPC. That's why it's half.
Okay, got you, got you. Okay. So you're suggesting not to put that. But Jonathan, what are your thoughts on that?
Well, we recommended it, and it's the manager's discretion. He didn't feel it was appropriate at this time. So if we have a handout, if you want to read some more about it, what we submitted, we can pass this around.
Yes, if you could, that'd be great. I'd like to learn more about that position.
Okay.
And also, my second question is about the skid loader with attachments. What exactly is that and why do you think about that?
That was something for the water pollution control. Kevin, please come up and talk about the skid steer loader. No, wait. Okay, so it's called EHF, just like that. Environmental High School. Environmental Health and Safety, that's-
I know. That's some field high school for all of us here at the table.
Kevin Schlatt from Water Pollution Control can address the skid steer loader.
The skid steer loader was to help us assist clearing our trunk lines, but also for snow removal and daily work projects around the wastewater treatment plant and the pump stations. So it was the price of a skid steer and about four attachments.
So we don't have one currently, is that correct?
The DPW does have one. The WPC does not have one solely dedicated to it.
So it's not a good idea to share. It's better to get an extra one, is that it?
No, we, one of my mantras that my, my team is, sometimes gets mad at me about is I, I'm pushing the sharing of equipment and we doing a lot of it, and whenever possible, we do it. Kevin felt that certainly with, he's talking about his trunk lines. He kind of glossed over it. We have a lot of sewer lines that are running through the woods, and if we need to access manholes or issues with those sewer lines, we need to clear basically a path through heavy wooded areas. And so he, he recommended that we buy a piece of equipment, and when possible, they would try and set up a multi-year plan to clear those paths, so that when and if we had an issue with those sewers, it would be easier to access. That was-
So that, that currently is not in your budget, is removed from the town manager? Thank you. I appreciate that information.
Good, Sandy?
Yes.
Tom?
On the custodial overtime, back way back up. There was a point, we're going to track that a little more closely. I know that for you, the, we were going to get a little better numbers on, you know, where actually is the overtime being incurred? Is it basketball games at, in sports activities? Is that like number one? And, you know, or is it a stripping floors? You know, where is the custodial staff? And I don't need that right now unless you have it. But if we could get a breakdown of where the real peak is, because then I see that $350,000 in, in, you know, overtime costs, would it be, you know, a good idea to hire a crew just to strip floors? So where you get three guys that do nothing but strip floors and cut that down as opposed to, you know, trying to keep part-timers on, which is very difficult. And, and that's what I was curious on, where the peaks were.
We, we didn't reanalyze it this year, but last year, Kenny Kito, who's the custodial supervisor, spent quite a bit of time keeping track and, and coming up with those numbers. We can give you-
Please.
That. It's, it's a couple of years old. It's, it's very resource-intensive to get that kind of data, but we did do it a few years ago, so we can give you that kind of breakdown.
And you were going to get, analyze this anyway coming up. You were looking to get it, you know, consulting in there to find out?
Yeah, we were looking, we were looking to get some outside assistance because, quite honestly, amongst ourselves internally, we spent many hours looking at all this data and trying to figure out exactly what to do. We think we know what we're doing, but the results aren't demonstrating that. So at some point, you say, well, we really don't know what we're doing, and maybe we need some extra help. And that's, that's where we are, so.
No, and I encourage that, that attitude too, to find out, get an outside perspective sometime is, is an awesome idea. And, but if you can, even a couple of year old one, I'd be curious. Thank you.
Yeah.
That's it.
Ed?
I guess two questions. One, on the storm drains, I thought we did half of them one year, and we, and we're in the process of doing the other half this year.
The catch basin?
Catch basin.
Yeah, the, the goal is to do them every other year, so we've been budgeting 50% this year, 50% next year, and then we'll go back and-
And we'll go back again.
Keep doing them, yeah.
The other question is, the sewer, whatever you call it, you're relining the sewers, is that going to be an ongoing type of thing now to replace, or only where there, we know we need to replace? Like, we did South River Road just recently.
Right. I'll ask Kevin to come up because I think, I think we understand that overtime, you know, that is a cost-effective way of, of repairing sanitary sewers that are buried deep below the road as opposed to digging them up, is to do this lining. And I know that the manager is very supportive of doing that, basically building that in every year. But Kevin, you wanted to talk about a little bit of the results.
Is that going to be an ongoing?
It's going to be an ongoing thing. There's 250 miles of sewer line. $100,000 gets you a couple miles of relining, depending on the size of the pipe and where it is. the pipe and where it is. So we're looking at at least ten to fifteen years going out.
Do it all?
Do probably about half to three quarters. You got, you got two hundred and fifty miles, there's a lot out there.
Yeah, I guess that's it. I guess that's answering my question, I just wanted to know if you had some kind of plan, or is it just where you know that they're bad?
Where, right now, we're getting where we know they're bad, and when we find an issue, but we're trying to come up with a plan with the facilities plan of getting a more concrete, steady way to go at instead of just, oh, we got a major leak here, let's go attack that.
And just the, the, based on what Kevin did with the sewer lining last year, one of the to-be-funded, if money allows, was called, we had up there, storm sewer lining, which we haven't done, at least in the recent past, basically using the same technique in that case on Drummond Road, where we think the storm sewers are pretty bad, as opposed to digging up the road, we were, if money allowed, proposing to go and line the storm sewer too, that was on the to-do list, that was on that list.
So this process can be used for both, basically?
Yes, it can.
Skid steer, I mean, I know, a skid steer will do the work of ten people, but you want the skid steer to clear, clean the trunk lines out? Correct. Why don't we just rent the skid steer during the winter months? Because you're not gonna do it in the summer or in spring, because it'd get too soft, and just clean them out for now, get that going, instead of buying one.
That was one of the options we're looking at, we're looking at about fifty miles in the woods, approximately. We didn't realize how much was in there until we started adding numbers.
When was the last time we went and cleaned them?
Before I started working here. Probably
I mean, that's something you really can't do during the summer or the winter, I mean, you gotta do it during the winter to really get stuff.
This winter wasn't advantageous for us. Problem is, we always end up with an emergency, it's usually in the summertime with kids. That was last year, we had kids out in, between Besson, Mullen Road, and we were out there for a good, almost a week, twenty-four se, twenty, you know, twenty-four hours a day. That was one of the things we were looking at, was doing a management plan to see what actually needed to be done. Usually when we need it, it's an emergency and two o'clock in the morning.
One of those last and very late, they have a schedule, and they, all through the winter, they go down, and they clean the, all those, you know, the sewer lines.
Uh huh.
As I say, you probably rent one for now anyway.
Yes, that, that is an option.
Joey, good. Anyone else? Questions, public works, water pollution control? Gina?
Thank you. Um, just so I can match your presentation with sort of what I can open out of the book, if you go, we have it on page P two ninety-seven, you guys proposed ten thousand dollars for other professional services, or their current, or basically the zero, I don't know.
Which division?
This is highway division. I don't know if I'm ready. Page H P two ninety-seven. It's, it's just a ten thousand dollar other professional services, I didn't know if you could tell me what that was, since it was previously zero.
Do you have the account number?
Um, and are the, is that?
Yeah.
In five, three, two, one.
Okay. Yes, that, that's, that's a fee for, to help us make the reports for the stormwater, it's called the MS four, that's what's listed in there, we budget it ten thousand dollars, we have to do an annual report.
And that wasn't required before?
No.
Uh, yes.
Since the new one's now.
No, 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 there is, there is, there is an annual requirement. The town, as far as we could find, didn't submit a report between two thousand and six and two thousand and eleven. Last year, we caught, we did two years, we did twelve and thirteen in one book, you don't remember, but they were, we noticed that copies were in the library, town hall, and now we're working on the twenty fourteen report. There is an annual report, there always has been, so we just weren't doing it for a while.
We have to focus on this now because the new legislation is coming forward.
This, the report is, irregardless of the, any new rules or requirements, we had, it was part of the original rules back in two thousand and four, that you do an annual report. No, no, we did do one initially, but there was a gap, so we're catching up, we're doing them now, we're gonna do them annually now.
Thank you.
Questions, public works, water pollution control? Are we good? I'm sure more will come up over the course of time. So then we thank you very much
Thank you.
For your presentation. Appreciate all of you being here this evening. Matt, is there anything else? So at quarter to eight, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn by Cindy, second by Tom. All who's in favor, opposed, we are adjourned.